Good evening. I'd like to open the Union County Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, May 6, 2019. And this evening our thoughts and prayers are with the family of 19-year-old Ellis Reed Paler, whose life was tragically taken from him on April 30, 2019, while attending classes at UNC Charlotte. Reed was a 2000 graduate of CADA, the Central Academy of Technology and Arts, while CADA, Reed won awards for his IT skills and was pursuing a computer science major at UNCC. Please join me in a moment of silence as our community county remembers the loss of Reed, his bright young man with great sense of humor and a kind spirit. If we'll just bow for a moment of silence, please. As we usually do, we'll begin our meeting with invocation. If you'd like to bow with me and we'll have our prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask your blessings on the business before us and please guide us in our deliberations tonight. Lord, please give guidance and healing to the families that lost and had injured loved ones at the UNCC tragedy. Also be with the family of our police officers that gave their lives protecting their community. Lord, please give this board the guidance that we need to set the example for leadership by demonstrating the respect that all our employees and citizens deserve. Also, please protect our military, firemen, and EMS personnel that risk their lives to ensure our safety. Please give special protection to our law enforcement and protect them as they serve our communities. Finally, dear Lord, grant us humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say. In thy name we pray. Amen. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
... on the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, and just for all.
Next, we have, I'm going to ask Jeff Yates if he will come up. We have a GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Jeff, if he'll come up and give us the details of that, please.
Absolutely. If it pleases the Commissioner, I'd like to combine this item and the second item because it's the same folks. So I have some of my staff here tonight, and I'll just go down the road. Debbie Cox, if you guys can come up. Kristy Kleiman-Bear, Daniel Purser, Beverly Lyles, Lindsay Helms, Blake Hart, Amanda Newton, and Avery Cookrow. And what we're recognizing tonight is the awards we received for our financial reporting and the budget work. And I have to say, one of the pleasures I get to have as the CFO of the organization is to facilitate this team. And it's a county-wide effort to put these documents together, but for the CAFRA Award, which is the Financial Reporting Award, there are over 79 pages of criteria. For the Budget Award, there are six different, or six pages, 27 different criteria that are required. And we've received the Budget Award for six years and the CAFRA Award for seven years. We've also received the PAFRA Award, which is the Popular Annual Financial Report. We haven't received that one yet. I think it's a matter of time. But we've received that one for four years and, or for five years, sorry. And we are one of only less than 10 localities in North Carolina to get all three. So I wanted to just recognize this team because they worked tirelessly year in, year out to put those documents together and operated at a very high level of excellence. And it's their work that's being recognized and the effort that they put in.
And it's becoming a consistent thing, right?
It is. Like I said, seventh year on the CAFRA, sixth year on the budget, so.
All right. Next, we have a public hearing, CZ 2019-002, Old Charlotte Highway Apartments. And there is Lee. Okay. Lee, if you'll come, give us a background for this, please.
This is a conditional rezoning request. Property is currently zoned, this is the old Barnett store site, in case anybody knows where that was, across from the Harkey Creek subdivision that's currently under development. Site's currently zoned B4, which is a general commercial district, and they've requested a rezoning to R4 conditional to build 211 apartment units on the site. This is a general layout of the plan. You can see there's 211 proposed apartment units on the site. Will consist of a pool and clubhouse. It's got two access points on Old Charlotte Highway. Couple of other things. One of those access points, the main primary access point is a full movement access point. And the other access point is a right-in, right-out. It'll be setbacks of 20 feet in the front, 25 feet in the rear, and 20 feet on the sides. And they will dedicate right away for the future widening of Old Charlotte Highway, and will construct sidewalks along the front edge of Old Charlotte Highway. And it's also bound by all other conditions and site plans presented as part of the application. These are some representative images submitted by the applicant. Kind of go through these real quickly. These are some examples of some apartments that are already in Union County. I believe this is the one behind the Dollar General up at the intersection of Old Charlotte Highway and Indian Trail Road near downtown Indian Trail. These are photos taken from the site. So this first photo on the top left is taken from the site looking across the street into the Harkey Creek subdivision that's currently under development. The second photo is taken looking west down Old Charlotte Highway, looking toward Indian Trail. Photo on the south is looking the other way toward Monroe. And this is across the street in the Harkey Creek Development Site, looking back toward the property. This is the old store, and to the right of this is the old home place. It is surrounded on three sides by Indian Trail. Across the street is unincorporated Union County, and you've got some other pockets of unincorporated Union County just to the east of that. And then the purple area down there where Rogers Road intersects and South Piedmont is the city of Monroe. So a lot of the properties around here are developed, but these are fairly large acreages. This is a nine-acre tract, has a house and a store on it. Harkey Creek still shows up as undeveloped, but obviously there's a subdivision being built on there now. So, but a lot of these gray areas that you see, these are already developed sites. So it's a fairly developed area with some pockets that are undeveloped. Current zoning in the area is kind of a mix of a lot of different things. You've got commercial zoning kind of back behind here, and over in this light industrial area, you have the brick plant. And then you've got some subdivisions heading back toward Indian Trail, along with some other industrial-type development along Old Charlotte Highway. So it's a mix of a lot of different types of zoning and a mix of a lot of different land uses. There are single-family land uses, commercial, industrial, general retail. So there's a lot of different land uses in that general area. No major environmental features on the property itself. It's mainly because there's no streams, because mainly this is a ridge line. So everything either flows that way or that way. This is pretty much the high spot. Old Charlotte Highway is projected to be, in the future, a four-lane with curb and gutter. That's in the stip for widening in 2029, so it's a little bit of a ways down the road. There were a few traffic counts in the area. There was a 19,000 vehicle trips per day just to the east of the site. And then along Rocky River Road, there was a count of 18,000 vehicle trips per day, but that was right near the intersection. And the land use plan, we've got several different categories in the land use plan here. Sorry. Papers are popping out. We have the Highway 74 Employment Corridor, which is this kind of blue hatched area that you see. That calls for some use, some industrial-type uses such as distribution, logistics, aeronautics, industrial and agribusiness. These uses and the application of the corridor are based on the location of the use and the adjacent transportation infrastructure. So while it's shown as a one big corridor, it's not really intended to be completely developed out as industrial uses. It's really location-dependent. The airport area, that's this blue employment center. It calls for developments such as restaurant and convenience retailers to serve employees as well as multifamily residential uses, including conveniently located apartments. That type of development should also be controlled by where it's located. And the third that we have is this kind of orange, not this darker orange, but the lighter orange, which is mixed residential. That also anticipates higher densities, and they're designed to include a variety of housing types, including medium and small lot, single-family homes, patio homes, cottage homes, townhomes, and apartments. So those are kind of the three overlapping land use designations in the comp plan. This is just a map we include to show the distribution of the folks that were notified of the community meetings and the public hearing and the planning board meeting. Staff comments were that based on the location of the property inside those three subareas of the comprehensive plan and the fact that two of those subareas specifically identify apartments as an appropriate land use, staff is supportive of the idea of apartments at this location. We feel that the proposed land use is in conformance with both the airport area employment center and the mixed residential area, and that this location is close to the existing and anticipated employment centers around the airport and is in an area of transition from commercial and industrial land uses to higher-density residential land uses. The only issue that staff had with the proposal is the density may be a little high. We also understand that markets also dictate how much density apartments should have. It is 20.29 dwelling units per acre. And the main reason that we pointed that out was that's maxing out the density in R4. So we felt that that should be located at a node, but we didn't feel that that was a big enough issue to not recommend approval of the rezoning. The planning board, at their meeting in April, heard a presentation from staff and the applicant. No one spoke in opposition to the project, and the planning board voted seven to zero to recommend approval of the rezoning. If anybody has any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
I'll just, I'll make the comment. I had conversation with Mr. Moser, and understanding the need for this type of living space to fulfill the job opportunities up at Sun Valley and the high school, the business center, and provide affordable accommodations for South Piedmont as well. It kind of sold me on the project, so.
And I believe they probably are going to make a presentation, so.
Okay.
If you have more questions for me, then.
All right.
They probably want to make a presentation.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks, everybody, again. My name's Michael Thiverge with Bowler Engineering, here representing Mr. Moser on this project, and happy to present this to everybody. And just go through, go through kind of a few high points and kind of the goal and the vision for the project, and happy to answer any of the questions that anyone has. As Lee said, this was 211 four-ran apartment units on, you know, roughly nine and a half acres. Entrance across from Harkey Creek, a lot of coordination went in with the county transportation staff and NCDOT on where these two entrances are proposed, trying to work with everybody to make sure that everyone was comfortable with that ahead of time. I think we got there. Happy with how things turned out. Going into just a little bit of what Lee touched on, you know, there's roughly the site location, kind of in that crossroads of those three different designations in the comprehensive plan, the mixed residential, the employment center, and the other corridor for the employment opportunities. Again, the mixed residential calls specifically for that apartment opportunity, and feel this is a good use for the area, which I'll get into more in a moment. Asking for the rezoning to R4 from B4. The main amenity on the site would be at the pool, which will have clubhouse, that'll have an indoor multipurpose athletics room. It's kind of in that central green area that I'll go see again in a minute, just to give everyone a good spot to gather for, you know, community and all. The TIA again was approved by NCDOT and county staff. Again, I think we got to where we needed to for the access there from their standpoints. Again, just looking at the site location, I think this is, you know, why we feel this is such a good spot for apartments. You know, you have Sun Valley just to the west there. You have the Monroe Airport just southeast, along with the growing industrial park in that location, and then South Piedmont. You know, this is a great location, in our opinion, just to be able to provide housing opportunities for the young professionals, millennials, and employees that would be, you know, trying to work and live in that area. And that's why we feel so strongly that it's a good location for the apartments. Again, here's just the plan. If there are any questions on the plan from anyone, I'd be happy to answer them. But the, again, the community pool and the clubhouse there in the center, just straight in from the entrance across from Harkey Creek. And the unit mix was predominantly studio, one-bedroom and two-bedroom. And, you know, with the goal of the project to be, to provide housing opportunities for the local businesses, employees, and young professionals, the goal to have some three-bedroom units was so that they were cost-sharing opportunities for young professionals, millennials, living and working in the area, just to be able to split up the cost of living where there might be opportunities for them to do that. Some of the representative architecture that Lee showed, there's some in Indian Trail. Here's another one, kind of that central courtyard pool area. Other just different, you know, representative photo we wanted to show everyone, give character of the architecture and the type of amenity we're proposing. Just another couple opportunities for potential ideas for the clubhouse and what the interior may look like. And just again, to summarize, we're asking for rezoning from B4 to R4, mainly to remove the requirement of the ground-floor retail that the buy-right zoning would allow. The buy-right zoning would actually allow more than double the current proposed count of apartments, and, but however, it would require ground-floor retail, and that's what we're, one of the reasons we're asking for the rezoning. We're, again, trying to provide housing opportunities for young professionals and millennials in the area, and the comprehensive plan calls for this use. In summary, happy to answer any other questions, and thank you all for your time listening to this. We'd request that if there were no other public concerns or concerns from the commissioners, that you would consider a vote tonight potentially, if you so chose.
Any questions? Only question I have is, can you tell me the building materials? Because I see what could be vinyl siding or hardy board. What are the plans for the building material?
The plans would be the hardy plank, cemented siding, along with the mix of brick and stone, you know, kind of different ideas in there, but yeah.
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and sharing with us. There was no one signed up to speak at the public hearing. Is there anyone that forgot to sign up? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Next, we have a public hearing on tax amendments regarding the general operating procedures of the Board of Adjustment.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dick.
It's been a while since I've been before the board. I was speaking with the clerk before the meeting, and I felt like a kind of a rookie. I think the last time I was here, I shut the whole computer system. Hopefully tonight, I won't do that. The reason for this tax amendment is to clarify the operations of the Board of Adjustment. This tax amendment was recommended by the planning board, unanimous vote of seven-zero, and the planning staff. It covers three basic areas. The first area is Section 80.120-G variances, and the purpose of this one is to bring the current tax into compliance with North Carolina general statutes and enabling legislation. In other words, we're going to change the four-fifths majority to a simple majority vote for quasi-judicial hearings. The second section is 85.030-E quasi-judicial row, and the purpose here is to clarify that properties, parties withstanding may object to evidence, testimony, or statements presented to the Board of Adjustment. And the third area, the evidence and testimony, Section 85.030-F, is three subsections. The first one is to clarify that parties withstanding may cross-examine witnesses and offer testimony. One B will permit interested parties to present evidence and testimony, and one C is to revise to state that any member of the Board of Adjustment may question any witness. One of the reasons we wanted to do this is to get a better definition of what is a party withstanding. This is based on the North Carolina general statutes. You must have one of these things. You must either have ownership, interest in the property, have an option or contract to purchase the property, be an applicant before the decision-making board, be a person who will suffer special damages as a result of the decision, and the city or the county of the decision-making board. And finally, the tax amendments. You can see here in 80.120-G, the one change is there is to change the four-fifths to a simple majority. Under 85.030-E quasi-judicial row, it's to change interested parties to parties withstanding, according to North Carolina general statutes. And a party withstanding may object to or clarify evidence, testimony, statements that are presented to the board. And the third section, under evidence and testimony, 85.030-F, again, under testimony, is removing interested parties and saying a party withstanding may present evidence or testimony, cross-examine witnesses, inspect documents, or offer evidence or testimony, and explanation or rebuttal. One B is that any interested party may present evidence or testimony. And finally, under one C, is any member of the board may question any witness. And this is all to bring us clarification and make us in line with general statutes and enabling legislation. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Dick, I may, I have one. Just, do we need to put the definitions in there of parties withstanding?
We could add that to our definition in the back, or since it refers to the general statute, which defines it.
I think if you talk about the general statute, so if you change the statute, the limits would also be performed in the same way.
I just didn't know the definition. But then, any interested party may enter evidence or testimony, so that sort of encompasses everybody that is not a party withstanding. Okay. I have no problem.
Okay, yes. As this being a public hearing, no one signed up to speak? Anyone that failed to sign up, not, we'll close the public hearing. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, would make one request from staff, since there is no opposition, if the board would consider taking action later on tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next, we have our informal comments. I'm not finding my paper, but Loretta, I know you're there, so why don't you come on up? Probably got covered up.
Good evening. I'm Loretta Malonson, 2923 Meadow Creek Lane here in Monroe, and I'm here to give you all an update on litter busters. I am very happy to report that we seem to be making progress. We were successful in the DOT litter sweep that happened a couple of weeks ago. We always clean Olive Branch Road because it is one of the worst. It leads to the landfill. I think because of the new ruling about the double fee if you haven't secured your load, I am fairly sure that's making a difference. We only had 35 bags of litter from Mallard Landing to Austin Channing, and that's considerably less than last year. So I hope that that new ruling is already making people aware, and they're taking measures to keep things from falling off along the way. The other thing is that we are growing on Facebook, 140 friends, people who are following us. We're reaching out to other municipalities. I'm helping out installing, Stallings has helped us. We're in conversation with Wesley Chapel and Indian Hill. So I'm seeing that we really are becoming litter busters of Union County. We're also starting to meet with clubs like the Rotary, and Civitan is a very impressive club, and they have been very supportive to us. We're reaching out to schools and... I mean, we can knock ourselves out picking up litter, but if we don't find ways to deter it, it'll be a never-ending battle. So I'm not sure who to come to at the county, uh, but I would love to sit down with someone, with a couple of my leadership people to discuss the possibility. How would we go about this? And, uh, you know, can we count on the county, uh, to be proactive and supportive just in talking about litter, having that subject up front and in front of people as much as possible? I know now that I'm like a billboard. When people see my face, oh, that's the litter lady or that's the litter queen. So I myself am making people think about litter. So thank you for all that you've done. Thank you for listening and I hope to be able to speak further about this in private.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it. And we have no one else signed up to speak. Next, we have our addition, deletion, and adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask that number ten be deleted. I spoke with the manager today and he agreed to take it off. And, uh, also I would like to add the, uh, item from Board of Adjustments that Mr. Black asked for us to add, uh, to the actual, uh, discussion item so that we could vote on it for the text amendments.
Yeah. Jeff, do we, don't we have to?
Since there was no opposition, we're just adding it during the revision.
Okay. Well, I'd like to also add the, uh, we also had a request to address the apartments on Monroe Road. Uh, we'll make the apart, if, if it's acceptable to the board, uh, we'll make the apartments, uh, thirty A and, uh, the text amendment thirty B if that's acceptable. Any comments or questions?
Motion to approve is amended.
Okay. A motion to approve is amended. No further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposition. Next, we, uh, request that we have the, uh, approval of consent agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any discussion? As adopted with the removal of item?
Ten.
Ten. Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I gotta remember to do thirty-eight and D. We have no old business, new business. We have a, uh, an item to address Drinking Water Week, May fifth through eleventh. This year marks the forty-fifth anniversary of Safe Drinking Water Act. That forms the core of our national efforts to provide quality drinking water and protect the health of our citizens. Union County provides safe, reliable drinking water to more than a hundred and forty thousand people. National Drinking Water Week highlights the value of water to each of us in our everyday lives and also recognize the importance of water source protection and conservation as well as the value of importance and the fragility of water resources. So I make a motion that we, uh, adopt a proclamation proclaiming May fifth, two thousand nineteen as Drinking Water Week in Union County. Any discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I would like to present to our staff proclamation. Thank you. And I'll tell you what, personally, Jerry and I have served in the Lakers for water. They'll do a fantastic job. Enthusiastic recognition.
Appreciate it. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, thirty A was our first public hearing item on CZ two nine, two, zero, one, nine, dash, two, zero, zero, two, Charlotte Highway Apartments. We're working on the fly here. Give us just a minute. I don't have to read the consistencies. zero, two, to rezone property appearing on tax map, zero, nine, three, six, six, oh, two, oh, in the Monroe Township from B four to R four CZ. Approve the conditions as accepted by the applicant and adopt the consistency, consistency statement for approval. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Got one for the next one, too. Next, for thirty B was the tax amendments regarding the general operating procedures for the Board of Adjustment. And since it's so fresh, I make a motion to approve the proposed tax amendments in section eighty dot one twenty and eighty-five dot thirty of the Union County Unified Development Ordinance and adopt the consistency statement for approval. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item thirty-one is the appointment to the planning board. Christopher Dugan is currently serving on the Union County Planning, Planning Board. His term on that appoint, appoint board expired on April nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. Mr. Dugan has applied for reapportment. No other applications have been received to fill this position. I make a motion, we consider reapo, reapportment of Christopher Dugan to serve on the planning board. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number thirty-two, the nomination to the Atrium Health Union Advisory Council. Michael Luke's president of Atrium Health Union sent a letter advising the board that per the lease agreement with Atrium Health Union, there is one open position on the Union Advisory Council that has yet to be filled and is requesting additional nominations for this board. This vac, vacancy has been advertised several times and Barbara Harrison has submitted her application to serve on this board. I make a motion that we accept Barbara Harrison's appointment to this board. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, this is gonna be the long side because Mark, you said you had a lot to talk about. Managers comments.
I do, I do have several things for the board this evening. Uh, first of all, uh, I'd like to make the board aware that, um, our North Carolina, uh, Cooperative Extension Office here in Union has, uh, just hired its livestock agent and, uh, she will begin, uh, her employment with us on June the third. Uh, just so the board is aware, this position is eighty-five percent county funded and fifteen percent state funded. And the, the board and, and, uh, staff have, uh, stepped up to the plate, uh, in terms of support to the ag community for this position. Uh, it, it's been one that has been a long, uh, process to, uh, get to the point of hiring, uh, this agent and we're all looking forward to, to that on June the third. The, the next thing, I have three, uh, employees, uh, none of them are with us tonight, but I would like to bring to the board's attention, you know, when, when your public servants are out there, uh, doing their jobs, uh, they're out in the community, um, they represent us well. And these are three examples that I'd like to share with you tonight. Richard Wood is a senior transportation driver. He was, uh, scheduled to pick up a client at their home and when they arrived at the home, he found that, he found the client, um, on the floor and unresponsive, uh, not breathing and Richard began CPR, uh, called emergency services, uh, and performed CPR for over four minutes until the emergency responders arrived and that person survived. Philip Mangum, uh, is a meter technician in our Public Works Department. Philip was going about his normal duties, reading, reading meters and he was in a subdivision and got down to the end of the cul- cul-de-sac and made the turn. Something caught his eye and a female was being assaulted in the driveway. And, uh, Philip stopped and intervened in that situation. Uh, and as a result, uh, the, um, the female was able to get away from her assailant. The assailant was apprehended, he ran, uh, but he was apprehended in Virginia. Stallings Police went up, uh, at the end of last week and picked that, that person up, uh, but they also, the police chief came out Friday morning to the operations center and recognized Philip for, um, his service to the community in, in literally saving that person's life. Uh, one more, Bonnie Carb, all right, I'm, I'm struggling here. Cabal, Cabal. Bonnie Cabal, and I apologize, Bonnie, if I have butchered your last name. Uh, Bonnie Cabal is, uh, an administrative, uh, support specialist in our human services area. She, uh, he, she works in the adult services unit. While she was shopping at a, at a shopping center up in Indian Trail, she observed an elderly female. Uh, because of the work she did, she does, she was, uh, I guess more attentive to this type of a situation. She observed elderly, elderly female who was disoriented and confused and Bonnie approached her and offered her assistance and the lady could not tell her where she was coming to, what she was doing there or where she had come from. Bonnie notified the local law enforcement, stayed with her till they arrived and as it turns out, uh, the elderly female was the individual subject of a silver, silver alert and had been missing from Gaston County. Three examples of your public servants out doing their normal job and going beyond the, the call of duty in, in helping our citizens. Next, as we, uh, as we roll into the, uh, budget review, one of the, one of the items that we're currently working with the fire departments on are their budgets. And, uh, there was a lot of activity over the weekend and if you'll indulge me, I just want to kind of bring you up to speed on that and kind of give you an idea of, uh, the job that was done this weekend. We had, we had a major storm that blew through the, the county Saturday evening and there was, uh, a tremendous amount of lightning. Uh, at four twenty-five, uh, there was, uh, a house that was struck by lightning over, uh, in the, the Wesley Chapel area. Wesley Chapel, Baker's and Stallings Fire Departments were all dispatched. That was the, the ladder truck out of Wesley Chapel. Um, a female was in the house with three small children when the lightning struck, uh, occurred. Uh, the house quickly began to fill with smoke. This was a six thousand square foot house. They got there, the, the fire was contained. There was fifty thousand dollars worth of structural damage on a six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar house. A few minutes later, at four fifty, uh, Wesley Chapel Station thirty-one, twenty-six, forty-three, Waxall, Pleasant Valley, South Carolina Volunteer Fire Department, Carolina Volunteer Fire Department out of Mecklenburg County, uh, were dispatched to a structure fire, uh, in the Marvin area. Um, the, the resident was not at home when the house was struck. Uh, the neighbor, uh, heard the, the strike, looked out, the, the adjacent house was on fire. He made the call. Uh, all of these, these, uh, personnel responded. Um, there was a collapse in the house, the fire, the fire personnel were, were, had to fight the, uh, structure from the outside. The ladder that came from Pleasant Valley failed. Monroe had to respond with their quint and an engine and additional staffing resources. Um, this was over a ten thousand square foot house, valued at one point three million dollars. Um, it took a lot of resources. Uh, they were with that until four o'clock in the morning. Uh, there was another lightning strike on an emergency animal hospital. Stallings and Matthews responded. Um, there was no, no fire per se, but there was some electrical damage. Prior to these two structure fires, Wesley Chapel, uh, Unit thirty-one was clearing from an elevator rescue. Uh, Station forty-three and twenty-six were, uh, responding to a, a motor vehicle accident on Highway eighty-four. And during the fire, when all of those stations were fighting this tremendous fire over in the Marvin area, Mineral Springs, uh, assisted Wesley Chapel with medical calls and covering their area and Jackson, uh, Fire Department was, came up and relocated at Station twenty-six to cover the calls in Wesley Chapel. And you can imagine all the coordination that had to go on, uh, through this entire period. This involved numerous, uh, fire departments from across the county. You think about the numbers of apparatus and the numbers of volunteers, um, that it took to, uh, perform all this, uh, and they got the job done. Uh, I will also tell you that this morning, uh, Monroe had a fire, a structure fire, and it was so significant, they had all their resources, uh, attached to that fire and, and during operations, Wingate Station nine moved up to Monroe Station two, Unionville Station twenty-one moved up to Monroe Station one, Baker Station nineteen moved up to Monroe Station four just for coverage. And all of these move-ups provided fire, rescue, and EMS responder coverage to Monroe while all of their other units were committed to the fire. Uh, and they were there for, for hours, uh, during that period of time. The other thing that I would like to mention that I thought about as I was being briefed on these activities on Saturday was, are we gonna run out of water? Are we gonna run out of water pressure? Because you, you think about all the numbers of, of engines that were pulling water off the hydrants and add to systems, uh, in several locations. Um, but I will tell you that I was told today that pressure never failed, the water stream never got weak, uh, and it's because of the investments that this Board of County Commissioners has made to our water system with the new tank that's over off of Hemby Bridge, or Hemby Road, right behind Station forty-three and the new pump station that's right off of Highway sixteen. Those, those improvements, uh, along with the dedication of a lot of volunteers and the, and the, and the right equipment saved the day on Saturday. Thank you for your time.
And next, our commissioner comments. Commissioner Aikman, it's for you.
Yeah, I, I just, uh, want to congratulate the, the finance team for their exceptional continued work and, uh, also want to thank this board and the county staff and the manager, uh, for the outpouring of love and support during the loss of my father recently. I appreciate that very much. With that, I wish everyone a good evening.
Mr. Rush.
No comments.
Commissioner Simpson.
No comments.
Commissioner Simpson.
Uh, just a quick one, I'll tag on a little bit to, uh, county manager's comments about the investment in economic development here in Union County for agriculture, and, um, despite the tremendous amount of residential growth that we've had in Union County, Union County's the, the third largest agricultural county for farm-level income in the state of North Carolina. We are the number one wheat-producing county in the state of North Carolina, number one. And, uh, it just so happens that this year, due to the excessive rains, almost sixty-five percent of the intended acreage to be planted the wheat in Union County was not planted. So that is a, uh, significant economic loss to our farmers, so, uh, it's about this time of year that the combines crank up, and we start to see in amber waves of grain go in the front of a combine, but there's gonna be a lot of acres that won't be covered this year. So, uh, we'll think about that.
Commissioner Ray.
Uh, the most common question I get asked is, how are things going? Do you like it? And, uh, I wanna tell all of the commissioners and the staff, I am having a blast, if, if it is such a thing at almost sixty-six to have a blast. Uh, Union County is something truly to be proud of. Uh, I will add on to one thing that Mr. Simpson said. The wheat that survived, I've seen a lot of really good wheat, so maybe, I think, I never thought it would happen with all the rain we had, but, uh, the yields, I hope, are good for the farmers. And as far as the water pressure never falling, Mr. Watson, Aubrey has taught me that they're real keen about hydraulics. We don't want no dead ends, so we're hooking up the dead end, so as long as we got hydraulics.
They were put to the test on Saturday, and they passed with flying colors.
Okay, and that's all.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate it. It, uh, I think, Mark, I really appreciate you pointing out the work that our volunteer firemen do, and they do this on a consistent basis. So, uh, next time you see one, why don't you thank them? Because a lot of them are your brothers and your sisters and your sons and daughters, so, uh, and it's not easy. And I think, Mark, I saw where the Marvin house didn't have any people in it, but they rescued some animals out of it, but...
That I wasn't aware of. But it was, it, it, because it, the lightning strike was so severe, it, it was a loss.
Yep. But I, I think I saw on Facebook where the chief was carrying out a, a pup or a cat. I couldn't tell exactly where it was, but they go that extra mile, and we need to, uh, let them know how much we appreciate it, just like we do with our law enforcement. Our officers here this evening, thank you for being here, we appreciate it. We thank you for what you do. And without that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.